I just say that's what we need.
No, you should.
I don't use J.
You should.
You should go next.
No.
So we have a question.
Well, it's unfortunate that I don't have food now because my sister ate at my house.
Oh.
Yeah, you're good.
Definitely.
We're gonna have to fill this.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was compost. I needed another one. Perfect.
Got all the forums?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Oh, is it all work? No. Die hard. I'm calling you. I'm moving. But for him.
There's a guy I wanna see.
Of course.
It's been a while.
Just could you enjoy talking to me?
I'm busy.
I know. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I know I have that shoe.
Right.
You're not sure. What am I saying? Evil.
Honestly, it's almost more than ten. Yeah. This is what it's like. For real. See your brand new senior.
And that.
The question is, if I decide that I want to flow. We don't.
Anyway.
And then Mother Nature. I mean, yeah, I haven't got enough paper. I'll do that. Okay. So we're just giving you. Can't even do it. And then he's picking up. Very good. Oh. Jeff. So nothing happens. No.
No, you just get.
Water. It's not smaller than the wire.
No. Oh. You have to.
You know what?
But they fall out.
Why do you always, huh? Just wanna carry that water. For somebody. Yeah. Water to universe itself. Wear anything else. Yeah.
Yeah.
Bro. Andy. You're cool. You know, I have. Where you guys meet? Where you're telling. Yeah. Yeah, that's cool. That's our. Anyway. We don't need them only in pressure.
You know, that's why.
Somehow.
You know, you don't. And you have to part with. I'm.
Go for it.
We got, we got rich guys. We got.
So. Do you have elections there?
Yes.
See, that's. I didn't bring it out. Yeah, we got four. Yeah, and we got a window. From T C. So the car usually goes up there early. Probably. That stuff. Too much. What is it? Good. Community center like this. They're right there. Well.
Maybe just for the.
Pretty nice. Yeah. I'm just. Like this one. Sure. But here you go. Makes sense. Sounds like a person. So how many parts they seem to be. This is. I got. First. Also, you're.
Like, did it not appear?
There's four of the eight words. Other numbers. All politicians. Yeah. That's. You know.
They have.
Yeah. He is a. I love this green. I know. Twenty cents. So smart. I was even at the writing. Yeah. You will see. You have just. You are just. I'm a little. Do you remember anybody ever? There's a lot of.
Very.
Yeah. Building. Upper. One. No, yeah. Like, right on top. So, yeah. And. John. Oil. Sure. More. So it's. Are you an M S four? Yeah. Just got an M S four permit for stormwater? Yeah. Stormwater. Yeah. I was like, ask me. And that's four permits. For stormwater. I had. Stuff. Yeah. What's. How are they? They're not watching. Whatever. Really. It's. That one. Oh, good. Yeah. What, tell me. Hey, you see. When you're out there. Right.
Yeah. Until we. I'm sure. I'm not sure. I'm sure. She wasn't.
You know, it's. You're lucky. It's a. Thank you. Should be. Be. So. If. You. Always. Always. So, yeah. Well, that seems too young. That's not the way. That was. Yeah. Do you listen to say our take? Way. You're doing something. And then I bet you go to the mall. Try them. Like. Yeah. And then you said that. It wants. How about the? Can I get you? Um, we have. Well, I. Yeah. Yeah. Do that. I think. Of course. Obviously. I already. Wait. I'm not sure. Training. We. I don't want to sell. Yeah. I'm not sure. Yeah, it was.
It is six o'clock. We will call the Sartell City Council meeting for Monday, July eleventh order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
What religions do you like? United States of America. United States of America. One nation. Under God. In Israel. With their. Justice.
Council, the next order of business is the approval, agenda review and adoption. We do need to add, add item six J to the consent agenda. So I'd look for a motion to approve with six J added to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda as presented with the addition of item six J to the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next up, we have open forum, public comment. We do have two people registered, it looks like. Just as a reminder for those speaking tonight, we do set aside time at the beginning of the council to hear from, directly from our residents. Each individual is allowed up to three minutes to address counsel at the podium. And council will not take action on the item tonight. We may refer that for future discussion or review by staff. So first off, we will call Kathy to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. And you're good to start when, when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Peters Chuck. My husband Jeff and I live at six oh four First Avenue North, Sartell. I'm here with some neighbors this evening to express our concerns about the safety and deplorable condition of First Avenue North. You should have received some pictures from one of the residents, just in case you are unaware of how bad this situation is. We have voiced our concerns for years to Public Works Department, city administrators, council members and mayors, often with no response and with no corrective measures taken. We've been told repeatedly that the road and alley are scheduled for replacement, but it gets pushed back year after year. We've been in a house thirty seven years. One of the residents has been in hers for forty eight years. We have no memory of this road ever being resurfaced, only patched, which is very short term. City street workers have told us that they recognize the serious issues with the road surface, the inadequate storm sewers, the lack of drainage causing flooding, but they say there's nothing they can do about it. It's up to the mayor and city council. We have put up with flooded streets, flooded yards, flooded basements, four people on our block, two times this summer alone, dangerous loose pavement in the walking area, runoff from a dirt alley that is poorly maintained that floods our driveways and garages with mud constantly. And this summer, heavy equipment from the River Road project further deteriorating the road and alley. Sartell continues to develop and expand. New roads are being added, it seems yearly. There's a twelve million dollar project, one block from our house, while First Avenue North is left to deteriorate year after year. We would appreciate a short term and a long term plan as to how these issues will be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Abby.
Good evening. Abby Black. My husband Jason and I live at six oh, one oh three Sixth Street North. So we are on the corner adjacent to both streets. We are going into our third year of being homeowners and, to be very honest, kind of naive about what that entails. There are certain things that I expect to be maintained and upheld. And unfortunately, the roads aren't one of those things that I can rely on for safety for my kids, parking with guests and neighbors, and heavy equipment like buses and additional road construction vehicles. Just this summer, our basement has flooded twice. It is currently gutted because our septic system and our floor drains have failed because they cannot keep up with the amount of water that is being held in the streets due to poor drainage. It's unfortunate that those are additional things that as a new homeowner and current, long time standing homeowners have to shoulder and burden. It's not something that you are thinking that you have to do of year after year. It's really eye opening to see how poor the conditions are when you're doing work on your own property. So when I go out to shovel my driveway in the winter, I am shoveling chunks of asphalt. And when I go to clean up brass clippings from my lawnmower or go to clear out weeds by the drain on the street, my rake is raking up concrete with that debris. So to echo what Kathy said, I would request that there be some sort of an update to the homeowners that are living and paying taxes for these roads to be prepared. I know that this is not something that happens overnight, but a consideration for planning and an update to the members who this is affecting would be very greatly appreciated.
Thank you. I know as council, we, we have received a number of emails specific to that area more recently, and I think since River Road, County Road One project began, which I think everyone's aware is a joint partnership with Stearns County. So it's a Stearns County road. It's our utilities underneath, which is why we're, we're part of it. But I also understand the frustration of looking at your street repair, the, the situation your street is in, and then looking at a twelve million dollar project. Most of that twelve million dollars is on the county and not on the city. But with that, John, not to put you on the spot, but we do have that as part of the West Road, West Reconstruct. Is that twenty twenty five?
West Side Project twenty twenty five, yes.
Okay. So that road will be fully redone twenty twenty five or that, that area? Okay. And I did see some email traffic that some short term patching, which we know is not long term, but we can rectify a little bit. Okay. Thank you for speaking tonight. Thank you for the emails that we've gotten, I think, keeping, keeping us abreast. And I know our staff is working hard on it, so thank you. Council, next on our agenda is approval of city council minutes from June twenty seventh, regular city council. I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. We have consent agenda items. Again, we're adding items J, the approval of resignation, acceptance and job posting. We will also pull item D, which is the bond sale resolution. So if there's no further, I would look for a motion to approve A through J with the exception of D as a dog. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Items A through J with the exception of D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carried. Item D? Welcome up.
Yeah. Good evening. Our bond sales this morning, and we have Jessica from Northland Securities, our municipal advisor, to disclose more of the details from the bond sale. So I will turn it over to her.
Thanks, Rob.
Welcome.
Mayor Council, good evening. As Rob mentioned, I am Jessica Green with Northland Securities and here tonight to present you with the results of your bond sale. We did hold the sale this morning at ten AM. Happy to say that the sale went really well. You do have a sale summary that is before you. I believe Rob handed those out prior to the meeting, so they should be by your stations there. I'll plan to just go through that information briefly and of course, answer any questions that the council may have. So what we have here is a par amount of thirteen million, six hundred and ten thousand dollars. This will be considered series twenty twenty two A for the city. The proceeds will be used to finance reconstruction of County Road One, Nineteenth Avenue, and then also provide funds for lift station number two, and then also some sewer main repairs as well. In terms of the finance plan, we are looking at a twenty year structure with relatively level annual debt service payments. For security, we do have, of course, the general obligation pledge of the city as well as the net revenues of the utility systems, including water, stormwater and then sanitary sewer. There are some special assessments here as well that could be used to offset the city's levy. In terms of the method of sale, it was a competitive sale, so again, we did take bids on behalf of the city. The low bid came from Hilltop Securities out of Dallas, Texas. There were six bids in total, so a really nice, strong showing today. The bonds were assigned a double A stable rating by Standard and Poor's. This is the same rating that the city has carried for the last few issues that you've had. The rating report did reflect the city's strong and growing economy, strong management, and then also very strong budgetary flexibility and liquidity as well. The final maturity on the bonds will be February one of twenty forty three, and then we have an optional call here on February one of twenty thirty. So the bonds could be paid off in whole or in part, of course, prior to that final maturity date. The par amount was reduced from fourteen million, seven eighty five down to thirteen million, six hundred and ten thousand. And this is in that table at the bottom of that first page. The reason for the reduction is that premium was received on the bonds, and I'll go over what that means a little bit on the next page. But want to point your attention to the all inclusive cost and the true interest cost. Both of those from the finance plan where we had estimated rates about a month ago, we are about forty four basis points lower than what we had estimated. So we have seen obviously a lot of volatility in the market recently, especially around the most recent Fed action. Happy to say that the last couple of weeks, we've seen some nice corrections in the market, so that's allowing that interest rate to come down. And ultimately, what that means for the city is that your average debt service is going to be less. So on an annual basis, it's roughly forty five to fifty thousand dollars less per year, around nine hundred and ten thousand in aggregate over the life of the bond is, bond issue, excuse me. So a nice significant savings there. The bid tab is on the following page, so you'll see those six bids that came in, again, with Hilltop Securities being the low bid. The Baker Group was the cover bid at three point six two, so just a few basis points higher. And then the high bid being fifth third with three point eight three. So a nice close range there though. So we do, we do feel that Hilltop submitted an aggressive bid, but overall, the bids were quite close together. And then on the following page, you'll see the sources and uses broken out by projects. So again, you've got this two street reconstruction projects. We've got some utility improvements there, et cetera. And the pricing summary in the middle is where you'll see that premium coming into play. So in the third column from the left, you'll see that the coupon or the stated interest rate on the bonds out through twenty thirty two is at, excuse me, twenty thirty three is at five percent, and then through maturity at four percent. Now, once we factor in the cash contribution from that premium, and premium is what occurs when an investor is looking for a higher stated rate on the bonds, and they're willing to give you cash upfront to do that. So in this case, because we did receive premium, we want to pay attention to the yield column, which is the fourth column. So you'll see that the true interest cost here or the yield is one point seven five, ranging down to three point seven five at the long end of the bond issue. So again, that's why we're able to downsize the bonds to that thirteen million, six hundred and ten thousand. On the following page, you'll see the combined debt service schedule. The city will receive separate schedules for each of those different projects, so you're able to track those separately for debt service purposes. But here, we're just showing that on a combined basis, so right around one million, fifty thousand per year. The next page provides the local issuance, so the bond issues that are transpiring here in Minnesota, both this week and next. And then finally, just a couple of graphs there, so you can see sort of the five year snapshot of what we're seeing for interest rates. And then finally, on the last page, you'll see a longer term, twenty year snapshot. On that second to last page, you'll see that correction that I was talking about. We saw that pretty significant spike again around the time of the Fed announcement, and then we've seen those corrections over the past few weeks. So overall, we're very happy with the results today. Again, a nice savings from what we were estimating just a month ago. So with that, I will conclude my comments, but I am happy to take any questions that the council may have.
Awesome. Thank you. Council, any questions? Tim?
How do you guys go out vetting the, the bidders? Are they pre-qualified or how do you typically, is it open call, anybody or how does that?
So it's, it's put out on Bloomberg, so the. So it's, it's put out on Bloomberg, so the issue is sort of at the issue, the issue is advertised for underwriters to come in and bid. Um, all of the bidders that we saw on the big tab today are well known underwriters. Um, we don't go through and sort of pre qualify anyone, um, sometimes we'll see a name pop up that we don't normally see. And we'll kind of, you know, scrutinize that one a little bit more, but all of these are reputable firms that bid today.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing any others, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, with that, I would look for approval of item D, the approval of bond sale resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that carries. Next up, we have four public hearings before us tonight, uh, first is a variance on six nine five Heritage Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first item in your packet for the public hearing is an application by Josh Mose. Um, as Mr. Mayor stated, it's at six nine five Heritage Drive, it is a request for variance of a swimming pool to be located in a side yard. Code for the city requires all um type of applications to be located in the rear of the yard or um. Any uh similar aspect to the rear of the yard, um, side yard, rear yard and other aspects in that. Um, this would be specifically directly to the east side on a right away, um, located on the side yard of the home. Planning commission did review at the July fifth meeting and did approve the, the variance for recommendation for council. Any questions for staff?
Counsel, before we open the public hearing, any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Uh, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the variance for six nine five Heritage Drive, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, council, any discussion or questions? It's got in a nutshell, it's a side variance versus a backyard.
Correct, yes, and the homeowner is in attendance tonight, if there's any specific questions to some of the difficulties of why that location was picked. Um, so council would be able to ask those questions as well.
I believe there's fencing along the Heritage Drive uh to the east of that home, is that correct?
Correct, there is, and I believe there'd be additional fencing um installed.
Okay, and so the size of the pool would be within that fence.
Rob, can you move that third page? Um, on your screen, you'll see. So I put together just kind of a overall concept drawing, so the, where the proposed pool would be located as well as the patio. Um, this is a little different from what was in the packets, but then the fence would be extended essentially to the north or along the driveway. In orange.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve as presented on the screen. We have a motion to approve the variance, is there a second? Motion and a second, any other uh discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that carries. The next uh variance request we have tonight is uh variance for eighteen oh nine thirty third Street North.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, second item, public hearing, is a variance to reduce a rear yard setback from thirty feet to ten feet. This is located in the BlackBerry Edition, um, just north of thirty third Street. This was a vacant lot for a number of years, property owner owned the um adjoining lot directly to the right of your screen. Um, lives in that home currently and is looking to potentially build a patio home on the neighboring lot, which she was owner of for the past eighteen to twenty years. With overall development, as well as when the, the site was platted, um, there, as most of. Most of us are aware, there's a number of wetlands within this specific area. Um, you can see kind of to the outer portion of the, the bubble, there's some wetlands specifically in that area. It falls below the five acre threshold, so therefore it requires a wetland delineation buffer of ten feet. And then um through conversations with the homeowner, the proposal was for ten feet additional beyond. The buffer line, so essentially it would be twenty feet from the delineation line. So using that um from a staff standpoint to accommodate some of the setback requirements to help. Um, fill the suit of the, the city's code, um, planning commission did approve. To reduce thirty feet to ten feet and including the ten feet of buffer for the wetland delineation line. Any questions for staff?
Counsel, any questions before we open the public hearing?
Scott just wanted the intent for the homeowner to live in that, in the new home?
Correct, yes. Denny's, uh, Denny Holland is in attendance tonight, he is the, the property owner as well as the homeowner of the adjoining lot. The intent would be to build a patio home or a retirement home on that specific site. And due to just overall wetland changes and development around that area, that wetland delineation line has, has shifted. So working with staff and adjusting lot lines as well as reducing that buffer requirement would make this a buildable lot.
All right, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on, on the variance request for eighteen oh nine thirty third Street North, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify, please step forward. Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify? We will close that public hearing. Counsel, any other questions or discussion? Scott, this is the proposal?
Yes. So you can see the wetland delineation line, you can see the adjustment of the actual property line on the right hand side. So where it says tract B, that specific lot would essentially change its property line to accommodate shifting that home over. Um, there's adequate space for meeting setbacks and side yard setbacks for both properties.
Counsel, if there's no other discussions or questions, we'd look for a motion.
I'll move that.
There's a motion to approve the variance request for eighteen oh nine thirty third Street North, is there a second? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion or question before we call a vote? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, that carries. Next up is the vacation of River Oaks Lane.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. River Oaks, uh, River Oaks Lane as well as River Crossings and Sartell River Crossings LLC. Have been working on this specific development around the corridor of County Road One and Highway fifteen. Through different land transactions, they are now the owners, um, Paul Tucci as well as. Sartell River Crossings is the owner of both parcels to the north as well as south of River Oaks Lane in the area of blue. This was in previous conversation with staff as well as uh council and council workshops to vacate this specific area. Due to land ownership, they were only able to vacate the specific area in red, which has been completed and part of the development. They are now moving forward with ownership of where it says new vacation, that specific property has been. Um, purchased recently and they are now looking to vacate the section in blue. Rob, can you go to the next slide, please? Within that specific area, this is more of a, a proposed site, um, with different buildings and things like that. Again, the area in blue would be the proposed vacation. The area that is highlighted in black would be um maintained as an access easement for both. Emergency access for turnaround as well as access for public works turnaround for snow removal and other related items. The initial plan was to have this specific area part of the public street. With the River Oaks, uh, the River Oaks Lane addition that we were working on with city portion of replacing the roadway. That has now been minimized to this, the area um of the property pin for the Hanky property, which is now Sartell River Crossings. Or just to the east or towards Highway fifteen of the Bragelman property. So from the roundabout to the end of Bragelman property would be within public road right away and maintain River Oaks Lane. The rest of the remaining roadway would be private roadway as proposed on the screen. Any additional questions for staff?
I guess one question I have, and maybe it's obvious, but um. We're gonna plow to the end of a street or halfway through a street. Where's the snow gonna go?
We'll take it off to the sides and they're aware of it and they're aware of having to get rid of it too. You know, where we leave it, and so then we're gonna back out and go, so. But they're well aware of what we're gonna do with it, and they agreed that they'll let the private contractor remove it, so.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Quick question, so um, yeah, first thing I thought of is snowplow going down there, so. Um, you know, this is fine while it's being developed, but when it gets turned over to all the, the landowners and developers gone. Then the, the businesses are gonna come and complain that we're leaving the snow there in the middle of their, their road, so what are we gonna do then?
I don't think the business owners are gonna be the owners of the site, though.
No, the specific uh roadway will be maintained by the, by the property owner, Tucci. And we do have a maintenance agreement in place and recorded with the actual development as part of that.
So what's the purpose of doing this? Why don't we just leave it as is?
Um, overall, lot setbacks and. Um, just overall underground and um input into the street and just requirements based on. City requirements versus private road requirements. And we've had multiple discussions in regards to at least keeping that um public up to that turnaround where, where it shows the interior street. Um, but after multiple conversations and overall maintenance on the city's behalf. It was determined that that was the proper line of changing from public to private.
I have one question. They've acquired the property towards the river, correct? Is that what you're saying? So anything north of, or whatever east? Yeah, correct, and I wasn't following the, the dotted yellow line on the slide before where it showed kind of a. But that's just two different parcels that they've bought, both of them.
Yes, Rob, can you go back one slide? So, the, the area in yellow um to the north, yes, would be the property that they have recently purchased. Then to the left of that, where to the left of new vacation, that is technically township yet, as well as the two properties to the south of that. That's why you're seeing those specific areas in yellow. The, the properties that show to the right have actually been annexed, just more of a, a county update.
Got it, okay.
All right, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the vacation of River Oaks Lane, please step forward. Please state your name and address to the record.
I'm Diane Bragelman at three two eight two seven River Oaks Lane. And you may be surprised because I'm gonna say very little tonight, that's unusual, isn't it? Jim, I don't think Jim's gonna say anything. So, things are progressing. And uh, we would give positive feedback about the crew that's working on that development. There are a lot of guys, um, but they're polite, uh, they're, uh, they're thoughtful of what we're going through. Um, it's been extremely noisy, there are some days, I'm not kidding, with all the windows and doors closed. When we shout at each other to have a conversation. It's uh, it's hard on a person's mental health, it really is. So, um, I'll be glad when they're done. It's, there's a, we have a lot of anxiety about what's gonna happen next and how low is it really gonna be and. Um, the other thing that's currently bothersome, the, a lot of big heavy equipment. And when they drive around the site, they pick up a lot of sand and it's really fine dusty sand. So when they come down the road, both coming in but especially going out. They're dropping that sand on what's still a tarred road, roadway right in front of our house. And it just floats up in clouds. Uh, we can feel it in our house, when I walk barefoot on the kitchen floor, if I haven't mopped it that day, I can feel it, the grit. We do a lot of sneezing, I can't prove that that's what it's from, but I'm, normally I don't have that issue. So there's a little bit of a health concern about that. If there's a way, I saw them once early on when they first started wet the road down, but they haven't done it for a long time. And if they decreased, not that they travel fast, they don't, but if they decrease the speed, it would help a lot. So I have some concern about that dust and some days the noise is just intense, it really is. Um, the other thing, the only other thing I wanted to mention is just because I'm looking at the map. That holding pond is really close to the river. And it's really big, um, I walked down there a long time ago, recently I haven't, there's so much stuff going on. Afraid I'll fall into something, but it's monster pond, I hope somebody's gonna really monitor that. It's just out of the way enough that it'd be easy to sort of forget about it. And because it's so close to the river, river, I, I, I'm assuming, I mean, we had a, your engineer, uh, what was his name? He, he came out and spoke with us a couple of days ago, he's helpful about describing things. Oh, and also, we talked to Scott this morning, he was very kind to us.
We appreciate getting that on the record.
So, um, the one thing we would request. Uh, in the, in the front of our house that butts up on River Oaks Lane, in one corner, we've got a little garden, it's a memorial to a. Granddaughter that we lost, she died. Um, and if they disturb that, that, that would be very bothersome, but we were assured that's not gonna happen, it's not even gonna come close. But the other thing is, if, if we use the minimal number of cars suggested that are gonna go past our house every day. There're gonna be six hundred a day more than there are now. That's gonna be a, a lot of racket and a lot of noise. So in addition to, and we are grateful for, very grateful for all the trees and bushes that are gonna go right between us and the car wash. Very grateful for that, but because of the extra traffic on River Oaks Lane, maybe some additional bushes. So we've got some over here in Ambus Garden and over here we don't have any, but it occurred to us to extend those along the edge of that. Property would be beneficial and it, and on top of that, there's gonna be a sidewalk that's never been there before. Which will invite foot traffic, uh, perhaps people walking, dogs and such, and we'd rather not have them on our lawn. If there was a row of bushes, that would really help. So with that, that's all I really have to say, um, like I said, I know it's a surprise.
Thank you very much, and you're always welcome. Anyone else wishing to testify on the vacation of River Oaks Lane?
I'm always glad when she goes first. I uh, I'm kind of a plant guy. I have this in front of me a lot, studying the uh proposed landscaping between us and the car wash. And uh, what I see is very positive. But I am concerned that the uh, over time, excuse me, over time, the uh. Length or the height of the plants that are scheduled to go in there. I'm hoping that what is written here is what is actually going to be planted. Like the twelve foot high trees, pines. That are designed specifically for such a, such a green space. And there's a variety of different kinds of trees going in there. So. And there's a couple of oak trees that are close to our home. But they're all within that twenty eight foot green space. And they left them standing there throughout all of this. And uh, they had a little yellow tag around each of those and up until yesterday. I think it was or the day before, they took two tree yellow tags off the two trees and left one tagged with a hill. Plastic ribbon. So I don't know what that means, if they then intend to take one of those out or. Or what it means. I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody, the uh, or in and out, I'm so busy working that I don't wanna bother them, but. Like I said, two of them are on the uh, property of the developer. One of them is partially on the property of the developer and partially on our property, but. I'm hoping that uh, when all is said and done, that they can do all of that work and still maintain those three. Charter oak trees that are still, still standing there. I'm hoping. It would be a great benefit to us. And I think the trees that they plan on planting could easily be planted right next to them and under them. Without any problem. Um, so I'll be watching carefully when these, I, I think the people that are building the car wash are also. Assigned to build or to plant those trees. That's what I was told anyway by the supervisor of. Uh, the Shigabi Builders. I asked him about them and he said, yeah, we're, we've been asked to put them in. And I don't know when they're coming. Uh, one guy told me he thought they would be coming like in August already. But I don't know if that's gonna be the, the truth or not. Things get delayed for one reason or another. We understand that, but. Um, when they're coming, I plan to be around so that we receive what is exactly. Proposed for this and has been agreed upon. Yeah, and I, I don't know if there's a, you know, there's quite a row of trees there. And it takes a lot of watering, especially in a dry season and especially when they're first planted. And I'm always available to water what I have on our property, the water hose and sprinklers, but. If these are trees planted and then nobody watches over them throughout the summer and fall. I hope that somebody who ever is running this car wash. They maintain it. I think it's them who are gonna maintain it. I, I don't know who's gonna maintain that area. So I, I don't know if there's a water line that was put in as, as they were digging here, I don't know. So maybe it's something that somebody could follow up on. Now it's time to put it in, if it isn't ready to put in. That's all about all I have right now.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on the vacation of River Oaks Lane? We will close the public hearing. Uh, counsel, any questions or comments? Uh, the only comment I would make is uh, the landscaping plan that, that was shared tonight. I know we've had a, a significant amount of conversation about that. At the time of approval and uh, expectations that will be followed as, as approved, so. Um, we'll watch to make sure that does happen. And I'll maybe ask, um, at the end of our meeting if you wanna maybe share that with Scott and he can address that. Counsel, um, if there's no other discussion, I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With a motion to approve? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Posed? That carries. Fourth public hearing is the preliminary plat and variance of Milltown Cove.
Mister Mayor, members of council, final public hearing was an application by C and F Investment LLC. We do have their engineer in, um, their engineering firm representing tonight. If there are additional questions beyond staff comments. This is a proposal of a Leesok Township parcel that would need to be annexed as well as rezoned. As part of their process in applying for the, the final plat, but. In your packets, that is the preliminary plat as well as two items for variance through that process of the plat. Rob, can you go to, um, just on your screen, location wise, Bromishenko property. Located to the north of Daybreak and near Northern Meadows. On your screen, you'll see the preliminary plat, which is a total of twenty-one acres and sixty-seven lots. It is a combination of both R two, two-family lots as well as single-family lots on the outer. Uh, more protected areas of the specific plat. So the R two area would specifically be along the main corridor of nineteenth. The roundabout and County Road one thirty-three. There is a right in and a right out located at, um, Rob, can you go to the final page of, go to page four, please? There is a right in, right out located in lot eight, which should be off of the county road. This has been reviewed by the county and. Guidance has been given to the city in regards to what would be allowed in this specific area. It would be right in, right out only. For emergency access. You'll see that from the inner s- uh, street A or the inner part of the development. There's a, a hammerhead for emergency access to turn around. And as well as there'll be knocked on bollards for access off of County Road one thirty-three. In the event that nineteenth or the main entrance to this specific development would be blocked. There is a maintenance agreement in place per final plat approval for the individual property owner. Developer to be maintaining that for snow removal and any other maintenance of that specific right in and right out. If this preliminary plat would be approved, it would have to go through the process of design from community development as well as our city engineers. As far as the variances within this preliminary plat, Rob, if you could go up to page three, please. And zoom out so that you can see the two highlighted red as well as yellow. So the first variance uh, that is requested is for a minimum curvature for the residential street. Per city code eleven five two, our minimum radius is two hundred feet, and that starts, if you can see where. Um, the area in red as well as there's little highlights in yellow, Rob, if you can zoom in a little bit, that gives the specific radius. But where there's dotted lines that um, kinda go left to right. Um, and then the curves, so that specific area is being proposed as seventy-five feet on the two northern. Radiuses and at the bottom, southern radiuses, those are being proposed at one fifty. There are some reasons to why this is being proposed that, that way. Um, there was other options as far as having half cul-de-sacs. Um, I know there's a few developments in April or John helped me out with those specific developments that have those. Um, we wanted to try and stay away from those due to maintenance and plowing as well as snow storage. So developer and engineering have proposed a, a smaller radius. So one of the variances is for a smaller radius, which staff is in agreement with, as well as worked with engineering team. To propose what is on your screen tonight. The second variance to be included with the preliminary plat is for a smaller lot width. Frontage on curves is a minimum of fifty. We're proposing forty on lots. Five through eight as well as seventeen through twenty. Again, that would be changing of, for a variance from. Lot width of fifty feet down to forty feet in those specific lots. Next steps, if this were to be approved, would be for annexation from the developer and landowner as well as a rezone for. Partial of this par- parcel to be R two, uh, twin family residential. Questions for staff? A number of items happening on the specific plat.
Scott, can you show us on the map where the R two would be? Is it where the variance is being requested?
So go to the um, second slide, Rob. That will zoom out a little bit. You'll be able to tell, so majority of. Of R two is gonna be in phase three. So essentially where the, the turn in off of nineteenth, which is gonna be at the bottom right hand part of your screen, I believe it's lot eleven. Uh, I'm sorry, thirty-one, so lots thirty and up to lot twenty. Twenty-one will still be R two, twenty through seventeen will be R one. Uh, just because of the overall lot width restrictions as well as setbacks and not being able to have frontage. And then lots ten through seventeen in phase three block one. Would also be R two, and then the inner part of the actual development, there are two primarily to the right hand side. So all of phase two will be R one. Phase one will be a mixture of both R two and R one, and then phase three will be primarily R two. With a few single family. Did that help answer your questions, Jill?
Thank you.
Scott, um, the lots that are forty foot in width are also gonna be deemed as twin home. Help me wrap my head around that.
There, I'm s- they will be, so the lots seventeen, eighteen, nineteen to the right hand part of the screen, upper right. Is gonna be single family. So due to overall setback restrictions, we were only able to fit single family. And the same would be to that other, to the left turn portion of that um, radius turn as well.
Sure, a- and that's the, more of the pie shape, but the other ones I'm looking twenty-one through thirty. Ten through fifteen are all rectangle shaped at forty foot width.
Correct, so they'll.
And those are planned at twin homes?
Um, they'll be common wall, zero foot setback, interior wall, so they're essentially be eighty feet wide. Uh, but there are lots showing as two individual lots with the common wall.
Thanks. I was thinking those would be, in that scenario, would be one lot eighty. Okay, thank you.
And one other thing to identify as well is if you look um, just below phase two on the left hand side. Um, that specific area is dedicated as a, a roadway to extend to the west. So if and when development happens to the west of this parcel, that road would then extend. And would be suitable as the secondary access for this development, and then lot eight would. Um, eliminate that specific right in, right out and turn into a buildable lot.
Mayor, you have a question? You have a question? Um, I take it that you've initially done the layout with. The, I know that County Road one thirty-three is scheduled for an updated potentially. Uh, county project, is that in conjunction with this layout currently? I know the study that they were talking about.
Yeah, the study that the county is doing primarily will affect the county road to the east of this roundabout. So this layout should not be affected by that.
Okay, and then following that with nineteenth, the new nineteenth is laid out on here as well?
Correct, we've been working with the developers engineer to make sure we're coordinating access and utilities.
Okay, and then the last thing is, um, would this then have city water and sewer piped in? Okay. Thank you.
So this specific site, uh, Tim, just to add some additional information, would be, be able to be served by the current utilities within nineteenth. Beyond this, then will require a lift station, um, further out development to the west will require a lift station.
And this will bring sewer from Pinecone over?
This particular lot can be served by the gravity sewer that's being constructed with nineteenth.
Are we, sorry, I know Alex has got one. Are we, um, are we designing it so that ties in at some point when the. Heavier sewer line does come over from Pinecone, that this doesn't be on an island?
Yeah, we're taking into consideration where that gravity line would come across and making sure that the two will. Work with each other and that this can be tied into that in the future.
Um, and then at nineteenth, the sidewalk is on the west side of that street, correct? With the reconstruction?
Uh, correct, the trail will be on the west side.
Do we know roughly how far between the sidewalk and those houses would be?
The trail will be contained within the right of way with the nineteenth, and so then you'll have the rear yard setbacks and, and yards for these lots.
Quick question for you, Scott, um, on these are, these smaller lots that we're looking at doing a twin home. Um, are these, is there intention to be rentals in there? So I think we ran into that problem with that other development down south where we thought all these new ti- townhomes are coming in, these twin homes. And then all of a sudden a rental sign went up and they're all rentals. Do we have any way of restricting that? Do we know what's going on here? Is this gonna be? Purchased or rentals?
So city code would not um, have anything specific that would eliminate rental versus ownership. Um, my understanding is that these will be ownership, but I can't confirm that, um, just with this private or his other. Private development and history, they have been sold, so I'm not sure on that, but I would.
That's a question we didn't ask the last time, and we, all of a sudden there was a sign in the yard that said we're renting, and these are all rentals and that. That caused quite a bit of controversy with the neighbors, if you remember.
It did, and, and from a staff level, there's, there isn't anything in place that would prevent um, the specific site for me either being rental or, or ownership.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify one other thing, Mister Mayor, the, with the right in, right out, that specific site was picked by the county, um, due to the overall roundabout and. Um, overall right of way needs, and we were not able to actually have a, a full intersection due to the roundabout onto County Road one thirty-three.
And I know we're bombarding you with questions before we even open up the public hearing here, but um, we're getting our money's worth, I think. On the right in, right out, is that, I think as it's shown, it's more of just a straight, not a true right curve? Um, it's fire chief, do you have any issue with that?
So we did do a plan review, a full plan review with fire marshal, and we took a look at that several times and. Every issue could we kinda work through at a staff level to make sure we had, we're able to accommodate the trucks, so, in each phase.
And then did we, um, I know, uh, one of the issues raised with the last twin home. R two development was, um, our notification or, or sharing that broadly in the community. What did we do on this one, or have we not been able to?
So, so that process hasn't been started. Developer wanted to wait until the preliminary plat was completed prior to any rezon. We do have signs, Nikki was able to, our engagement director was able to make up some signs for us, and we'll go through that process of identifying that site with signage. As well as uh, proper notification as this will be one specific site that would be proposed to be rezoned versus a large area.
Okay, so that's forthcoming and uh, we'd be able to get public feedback at that point. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Awesome. We will open the public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to testify on the preliminary plat and variance of Milltown Cove, please step forward. Second request, anyone wishing to testify on the preliminary plat and variances, uh, Milltown Cove? Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify? We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would look for a motion on the preliminary plat and variances.
I'll make a motion to approve.
With a motion to approve the preliminary plat and variances, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Posed? That carries. Onto old business, we have compo site gate agreement.
Mayor, members of the council, um, I will start on this and then John's available for questions, um, as am I. So in front of you, you have the compo site gate agreement. You might recall that we've had some conversations about making the site more automatic. Uh, we've had some workforce challenges out there. We also have approved a new purbanee. You might recall that we've had some conversations about making the site more automatic, uh, we've had some workforce challenges out there, we also have approved a new permitting system. That uh, allows a scannable option and so if we could find uh, the proper gate and equipment, we knew that our permitting. Uh, system as is today would work well with something that was more automatic, uh, so we were able to find a vendor. With the help of some uh, local development groups and uh, attached is the agreement with the vendor. A couple nuances to this, um, so it is a one-time cost and then there's a monthly cost of one fifty, that's just for. Servicing, customer service, if um, there's any issues that arise with the equipment, technology. Uh, we would be proposing to put security cameras out there and that would, those security cameras would tie in via fiber back to all of our other security cameras. There was an option for us to do more of a rental, rent to own, I would say, um. With a- a- and the cost of that versus the one-time cost, um, because we'd have to pay that rental fee every single month over twelve months. And we'd only be using the gate for half the year, uh, we found it would be more cost effective for us to. Buy it outright than to continue to rent it, um, we think. It will allow us to provide better hours to the site, not having as many workforce challenges, uh, better permitting system. So virtually all of the compost permit process will be able to be handled online and automatically. Uh, once we can get the gate installed, so I will stop there and feel free to ask John or I of any more logistical questions. Or specifics around the agreement.
Any question on the automatic compost gate?
Um, is the intent to install that yet this year?
I don't know what the lead time is on it, but possibly, we gotta get uh, fiber out there yet too, so there's a lead time on that also.
The the. The biggest holdup will honestly probably come down more to fiber, we wanna make sure we have fiber out there for both the uh, technology on the gate system. But then also for the security cameras and so. We're slated to have that fiber installed, uh, September and so we're hopeful that we can make this all happen yet this year. Uh, but we also, we do have staff hired for this year and and. Have them scheduled, so we, even if we could get it late in the season, we think just having it available for next year would be exceptional.
Okay, and the cameras were not included with that quote, correct, that would be separated?
Correct, the cameras would be under um, a brother's quote, which uh, we had already slated for and budgeted for under our ARPA funding. Um, we're working to get cameras at every single city location and tied into our fiber. Uh, some of, many of our locations are without uh, cameras and so this would allow us to have better visibility throughout the community. Especially with the fiber install that we've had throughout.
Um, and then one more question, is there any plans for signage or instructions, I assume the. Employee who's working there provides some level of instruction to. Where to put your, you know, where to put it and.
Yeah.
Do we?
There is signage.
There is signage.
We will likely share that signage too as a part of the permitting process, um, especially in this first year as people are getting used to that gate, uh, there. There'll be something that you have to scan to get in, but not to get out and so things like that of, um. Essentially, uh, right now they use an iPad to scan when you're out there, uh, so they'll, instead of putting their. Permit in front of the iPad, they'll put it in front of a machine in a a gate arm, but we can share that as a part of the. Online permitting process and here at city hall too, so we can try to catch them before they're out there. One item that we will need to decide at some point, uh, once we do have the gate installed and and probably prior to, um, more in line with next season. Is the hours. Uh, it will allow us to choose much more flexible hours, I'm not sure that we'll want it open twenty-four seven with um, evening out like dark hours, but. Um, John's shaking his head, but we will be able to allow significantly longer. Uh, and more usable hours for multiple schedules out there, so we'll wanna talk about that at a future state of what we'd like to see those hours be.
Thank you.
Um, one item that came is, I love the idea of getting the gates and uh, giving more flexibility to future hours. Um, I do have concern on utilizing the ARPA funds and all our, this council's talked about in the past of. We wanna leave some of that for future and unknowns, um, I love that in the opportunity cost, we've got. An ROI of less than a year. I guess, Rob, is there flexibility to utilize that from a different fund and then repay that so that we do preserve some of those ARPA funds?
If we wanted to do it this year, that would be a challenge, but if we did purchase it next year, uh, since we're beginning to start our budget process, it could be something. We add to the budget, I'm not sure what other fund we can leverage at this point, but once we start planning. I could identify another fund that are fit, uh, our ARPA funding, we do have just over six hundred thousand dollar contingency. So spending money on the compo site gates and cameras would. Uh, chip into that, but still a pretty significant contingency for what we planned on using to reduce our levy next year and the year after.
And the ARPA fund remind us, when does that expire?
Uh, is it end of next?
Twenty twenty-four.
And we don't have a uh, another public works, uh, fund of.
Street fund.
And inner loan, inner fund loan as we've always liked to do?
Yeah, we could get creative if uh, you're really unsure about using American Rescue Plan dollars. But I can, I can follow up on that.
And counsel, I I mean, it's, um. It's twenty-five thousand against the six hundred thousand dollars that we've set aside, um. I don't know that I'm passionate one way or the other, but it's more of just as we had that discussion of preserving those funds, um. For unknowns in the future, again, twenty-five thousand isn't gonna make or break that fund, but, um. That's, that's where my mind's at. Any other thoughts or questions? With that, I would look for some type of motion.
I would make a motion to approve the compo site gate agreement.
There's a motion to approve the agreement as stated, is there a second? Motion and a second. Uh, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Onto new business, we have twenty twenty-two street and drainage improvement agreements.
And mayor, members of the council, for your consideration tonight is an agreement to complete. Uh, the design and bidding quote process for the twenty twenty-two street improvement projects, which would include a combination of. Seal coat projects, overlay projects and street and drainage projects, uh, the city annually budgets for these types of projects. Um, of note, the budget for this year, um, a portion of it was used to complete the feasibility. Studies for Fifteenth Street North and also the central Minnesota healthcare hub roads, um. So if approved tonight, we would move into the design phase and then bring back at a later date. Uh, quotes and bidding prices for final approval, uh, and award of those projects. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions on the street and, excuse me, street and drainage improvement agreement? I see, uh. Well, that's, uh, I was gonna say I see Grizzly Lane on there, but that's drainage repairs. They wanna paint it or uh, seal over our new paint job out there, quite yet?
No, it's farther over. It's on the other side of nineteenth.
Uh, counsel, any discussion? Otherwise, we'd look for a motion on the agreement and bid slash quotes. We have a motion to approve the agreement and bid slash quotes. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that carries, next up is our preliminary and final plat, Fertie Self, Pine Cone Plat twelve.
Mister Mayor, members of council, just a quick um, staff review of this specific site. We have brought this forward twice to planning commission for review, as well as brought forward to the council for initial review. The overall plat includes three outlets, outlet A, B and C, which outlet A is in the top left, which includes. Two parcels that would have potentially been landlocked, which are outlet B and outlet C of Pine Lakes. There was some right of way that was um, included through this plat for the city that was previously in easement. As well as um, potentially setting up other. Lots, outlets for future development along Pine Cone. There will, there was not a preliminary, uh, there was a preliminary plat completed in two thousand two, so there was not a public. Per city code, a public hearing was not required. With this site and easement was required and is part of your packets, that easement is showing access through the current church property. For the acc- accessed outlet A. Other outlets C and B are accessible either through Pine Cone or current property owner has adjoining property. That makes it accessible. Any questions for staff?
Are we able to display the pictures in our packet? Which shows the outlet A.
Sorry, Rob, go to, go to the next, just zoom out a little bit. So as far as staff is understanding, outlet A is proposed to be sold. It is being put into an outlet as it is not planned to be developable as it is primarily wetlands, if it is. Due, um, due to our, our fee schedule as well as development requirements, it would go through a process of being. Platted with an actual block and lot and that is part of the resolution in your packet. The same would be for both outlet B and C, both B and C, there's, there's wetlands in B, but primarily. Um, buildable space on a portion of it as well as on the eastern side of Pine Cone would be developable and when. Mister Fertie moves forward with either sale of the lot or developing on that specific site, then it would be plotted to a lot.
Counsel, what questions do we have? Generally speaking, this is a cleanup endeavor as we've previously talked about?
Correct, as previously discussed, there's a number of um, smaller lots that were, you can kind of see the along outlet A. There's a number of uh, pins that were just, there was a number of parcels that were cleaned up for, like a better term, yes.
Sure.
I think there were seven or eight parcels included throughout.
Counsel, would look for a motion on the preliminary and final plat. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second on the approval of preliminary and final plat, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that carries. Onto department reports. Please.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening, you have my report before you, I just want to publicly talk a little bit about a couple of events we have coming up, national night out. Is August second, um, the deadline is, I believe, um, July twenty-six for neighborhoods to sign up. So if they would get ahold of our CSO, um, tailor, he will get everyone signed up. Um, in years past, we've had. Twenty-three to twenty-five groupings, neighborhoods, uh. Manufactured home communities, assisted living facilities participate in this event, so I foresee it being a a huge success again this year. And the other thing I wanna point out, it's been on hiatus for two years, our cookout with cops is back, we're very happy to be. Posting that, I continually get asked and have over the past few years by the seniors in our community when that's coming back, so we're. We're happy to have that, uh, as part of it and as in years past, the fire department will participate with the presentation as well, so. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief Hughes? National night out, easily one of the most enjoyable nights in the community. Think I uh, I averaged about ten to fifteen ice cream cones that night at each stop and. Uh, the community absolutely rallies around it, um, from barbecues to. Ice cream socials, it's, it is a lot of fun, so, uh, thanks for continuing that effort and and organizing of it. And I also wanna call attention to the uh, the new responder. What do we call them, the responder decals?
Yes.
Uh, that was shared out today, uh, from joint departments, uh, I think those. Obviously, we saw a lot of uh, feedback, positive feedback online today about it. Uh, so counsel, I'm hoping everyone saw what those are and uh, realize what that can do for our responders and the community as well that are in need, so. Thanks for doing that. Fire.
Mister Mayor, members of council, you have a monthly report for June for fire department, um, just wanna publicly, I guess, uh, thank Kellen Helmsch. Uh, who just, uh, you guys accepted his resignation of twenty years tonight, uh. You know, anytime a firefighter makes twenty years and dedicates that kind of time, uh, I think it's really noteworthy. Just wanted to publicly thank Kellen and uh, best of luck to him with his, enjoy his retirement, so. Just to shut the pager off and get some good night sleeps again, so, um, other than that, available for any questions?
Any questions for Chief Kowalski? Again, thank you too for the responder, uh, decals and look forward to national night out. Public Works.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor, members of the council, you have a report, any questions, me and April will be happy to answer.
Any questions for April? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, city commission updates.
None at this time, just a reminder, we do have our everything start meeting next Tuesday morning.